Good evening and welcome. This is the February 10th, 2025 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that you please exit through the doors to the right, proceed down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to the left and use the alternative stairwell. Please do not use the elevator and please alert staff if you need any assistance. We ask that you silence your cell phones to avoid disruptions during the meeting. I do want to take a moment to clarify and address some few misconceptions regarding the media list. This was previously used to send press releases, agendas, and public notices. Upon review, it was outdated with many listed individuals being residents without media credentials. So to ensure fairness and accuracy, we updated this list. It's important to note that this wasn't an agenda distribution list. And of course, we don't want to show preference to anyone's citizen over another. When we move forward, we can work with administration to create a signup or alert system for those wishing to receive agenda notification. So we do hear you loud and clearly with that. As we open tonight's session, I want to take a moment to recognize that February is Black History Month, a time to honor the achievements, resilience, and contributions of Black Americans throughout our nation's history. As a Black man and someone who has the honor of serving this city, Black History Month holds a personal significance for me. It's time to reflect on the sacrifices and struggles of those who came before us individually, who despite unimaginable odds paved the way for us to be here tonight. It's also a time to celebrate the progress we've made, even as we acknowledge how much work remains to be done. Black History Month began with Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who envisioned it as a way to ensure the stories of African-Americans were not erased or forgotten. What started as a week in 1926 grew into a month-long celebration by 1976 during our nation's bicentennial today. Today, it serves as a reminder not just to reflect, but to take action to educate ourselves and to keep moving forward. This time, I'd like to ask my fellow council members if they'd like to share some thoughts or reflections of this month as well. Yes, Councilwoman?
As a retired kindergarten teacher, we obviously covered very important items each month. And during Black History Month, we talked about the inventors, the African-American inventors of things they would understand, one of which is a stoplight. Another gentleman, and that was Garrett Morgan. And another one was Benjamin Banneker, who created the first wooden clock. It worked properly, but it was, you know, he took a pocket watch and then made it into a clock. And then the other thing that was interesting was Thomas Stewart, who made the mop, the normal mop that we all use now, made it much easier for people to use. And so we tied in art projects and information about these particular African-American inventors so that they could look at things in their environment in a different way. And the traffic light was a big one.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, I do. I have a list, and y'all probably know I do. But I'm not gonna go down the whole list today. I have some Black History information, and one of them is Mr. Emerson Holloway, who was an educator. He was the first African-American male or person to even be elected to the county council. I also have Ms. Gertrude Shockley, who was the first African-American female to be elected to the city council. I also have Cherie Sample Hughes, our delegate, 37A, who is the first African-American female to be on the county council and the first from the eastern shore to go to the House of Delegates. It's a proud moment here, very proud moment. Deshaun is the second of two African-American men. One was appointed after Laurel Mitchell left, but Deshaun is the actual first elected African-American male elected to the city council. We also have Von Siggers, former city councilperson. There was Rachel Polk, and there was Shaney Shields, and then myself. And I would like, that's a part of history. You know, we always talk about Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, but we need to let our young people know that there is history right here with our African-American history. And it is a very long stem of history. We have Professor Chipman, who the Chipman Cultural Center was named after, and I had the privilege of knowing him very well. We all went to church together as a little girl. My father used to carry him home from church. So he was an educator as well. So we just have a lot of rich history here, and we need to keep it alive, and it doesn't just stop here. Black history, to me, is every single day that one of us does something that is substantial in our communities, substantial in our city, substantial in our community, our county, and our state. Some of us go far and beyond, but Black history is a very rich history here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Yes, Councilwoman?
I do a lot of reading. So the last couple of years, I read the Ida B. Wells story, and one of my favorites has become my favorite. Pioneering Black journalist, she also was a teacher, activist for women's rights, and especially with the suffrage movement. She also was a crusader for the anti-Lynchon movement, and she used her power of her journalism to make people aware of the horrors and the extreme conditions under the Jim Crow laws. So Ida B. Wells, read her story, read her book. It's phenomenal, and I learned so much. Thank you, Ida B. Wells.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I just want to read something that I wrote earlier. Black History Month is a time for reflection, celebration, and education. It offers a vital opportunity to honor the countless contributions of Black individuals, some of which are up here sitting with us today, who have made to society while acknowledging the struggles they have faced throughout history. Black history is not just Black history. It is American history, world history, and a testament to human resilience, creativity, and strength. Remembering this history is essential because it empowers us to understand the present and shape a better future. The stories of leaders like Martin Luther King Jr., Harriet Tubman, and Malcolm X, and countless unsung heroes remind us that change is possible through courage, unity, and determination. Their legacies inspire us to continue advocating for justice and equality today. However, Black History Month is not solely about struggle. It's about celebrating achievements and culture. The arts, sciences, literature, and countless other fields have been enriched by Black innovators and creators whose contributions often went unrecognized. By remembering their work, we ensure that their stories are not forgotten and that future generations have role models who reflect their identities. As we honor Black history, we are reminded of the importance of truth-telling, empathy, and inclusivity. By understanding the past, we can learn from its lessons and commit to building a society that values diversity, equality, and respect for all. Black history is a celebration of resilience, progress, and hope, and it belongs to all of us.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, councilmembers. And with that, if you wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll have the invocation delivered by our very own Councilwoman April Jackson.
Dear God, as we come before you this evening, God, humbly and gracefully asking that you all keep us on task and keep us on one accord. God, that we will be respectful. I pray for peace, a peace that passes our understanding. I pray for grace, and I pray for obedience. God, keep our government, our city government, county government, state government, keep them covered, God, because these jobs are not easy, and I know you know better than anyone. God, I just ask you that our citizens be able to rely on us, depend on us, and be faithful in everything we do. God, I just thank you for being that guiding force for us all. And God, let our minds stay on you. Stay on Ben Denise, God, and keep us covered. You are the Alpha, the Omega, you're the beginning and the end, and all things through you are possible, God. These prayers I ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. This time, we'll invite Fire Chief Rob Frampton for a 2024 operational review of the Salisbury Fire Department. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
And councilmembers, again, the screen is not active at this moment, but City Clerk Ms. English did forward the presentation, if you will. We'd like to review that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bear with my voice, I'm recovering like many of us are from...
Well, yes, we're glad we have a little distance.
All better than...
Hope you feel better, yes.
So just to kind of give you a wrap-up of 2024, no doubt, another busy year for the fire department. Calls were up, total calls were up 4.3%, which is kind of in line with what we were trending and what we expected. Fire calls totaled for the year 4,403, which was up 171 calls. EMS calls were 12,623, up 534, which combined is the most calls the Salisbury Fire Department has ever ran, 17,026, which is by far the busiest fire department on the eastern shore until you cross the bridge, and then it gets a lot busier. So and you can see total fire units were just under 7,000, or basically one call every 30 minutes. The next is a graph, so I don't really need to go over that since the TV's not working. The page three is a little breakdown of where exactly the calls are. And I think it's important to stress where our call volume growth is specifically with regards to EMS calls. EMS calls outside of municipal limits were up 12% year-over-year versus inside the city limits was up 3%. So I think that's important with some of our discussions and negotiations moving forward, that we keep that, those numbers in mind. Meanwhile, going outside of our fire district, so going to places like Fruitland and Parsonburg was actually down, and that's because these places are hiring more people. They're hiring more staff, putting more units in service. Delmar staffing more units now than they ever have. So they're not needing us to go outside of our fire district, but within our fire district, calls are definitely on the rise. And fire calls tend to be the same. The one outlier is they are going up outside of our district, and the reason is there are changes in the volunteer fire service at the county level that we're forced to comply with, such as multiple fire units on high-speed, you know, roadways, such as going out towards Whitlow Road on 50, heading out towards Parsonburg, and then going north of, say, the state police barracks. Those are all multiple dual responses, where we go now where we didn't used to respond. And those are changes that are agreed upon at the county level and then pushed down us, and we need to comply with those. So again, you know, up across the board, except for the EMS calls outside of our district. I've gotten a question a couple of times when I've come up here, is about EMS calls at the skilled nursing facility. So I've got some information for you on that. So in 2024, we had 1,621 calls at skilled nursing facilities, which is about 12.8% of our total call volume. So that's a lot. With that being said, it's about a 50-50 mix of what we call Bravo or lower, which are minor, you know, low-acuity calls, and a 51%, which are Charlie or higher, which are your more serious calls. But that's how they're dispatched. What ends up being is that about over 75% of them end up being basic life support calls or non-urgent, where there are no transport. So what are we doing to work on this? Well, we had a meeting, many meetings, but we did have a Zoom with several regional vice presidents with one of our, what we call, super-user facilities in the area. And we had several of their vice presidents on there, and we've had some discussions. We have now opened up and have a draft MOU with them to allow the nurse practitioners to go into their facility. They were, this facility was recently taken over from Title Health, and that MOU kind of got lost in the transition. So we have brought that on. We had their medical director on there. And Title Health staff, our staff, and this facility are all working on making sure that that MOU is gonna help fix this problem and allow some of the nurse practitioners that are part of our SWIFT and MDCN team to get in there and actually address those calls and not have to transport out of this facility specifically. So that's gonna be relatively, you know, pretty significant for us moving forward. So I hope that answers some of your questions about the nursing home. That's just one facility. This is just the start of how we're gonna tackle this with many others. Some of the things that we couldn't do, outside units came in to assist us 77 times in 2024, and EMS units had to come in 335 times, which is up from 124. So that's a call volume increase for us, and that just shows that our units were busy and unable to handle the call volume within our fire district. So that's concerning, you know, as units weren't available necessarily to handle calls within our fire district. We had to rely more and more upon units that are outside to come in to help us, which is, you know, almost not quite three times as much as it was.
Chief, if you don't mind me to interrupt, I want to slow down because this goes to a question I was gonna ask at the end. So outside, so for a call that was in the city limits or in the incorporated district, 335 times, and a unit had to be called outside to come and assist?
Within our entire fire district. So city limits, county limits, that's correct.
And so, I mean, reasonably, would that impact the response time for...
Significantly, yeah. So what we do to kind of address that on the initial is we end up having to send a fire unit, which is a larger resource, more costly. It's got three or four people on it instead of two, to get there fast, to start basically first aid. They have an AED, they have limited medical supplies, but they can start something until that unit comes from Parsonburg, Hebron, Fruitland, Allen, Delmar.
That's concerning. Also, with the multiple units, and you gave the example of if there's a high-speed motor vehicle crash, MVC, right? Yeah, yeah. Trying to learn, is that those are, you said that was a county run, that the county...
County fire chiefs made a decision that on all highways with speeds greater than 55 miles an hour, that they would respond to what we call capital fire. So two fire trucks, two fire engines, two ladder trucks, whatever you want to call them. But and that's just because if you pay any attention to any news across the country, it's just the severity of the accidents, people not paying attention. So the county fire chiefs made a decision and implemented that countywide, and of course, we're forced to comply through mutual aid agreements. And they comply as well. Don't get me wrong. I mean, there are certain areas heading out towards Parsonsburg where they come to back us up as well.
Okay. I just, I wanted to kind of go along the line of that conversation there because it seems like, you know, if kind of, you know, we're, this is actuality, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul. So we have, we're lending our units and our manpower to outside agency, but then our folks in the city are having to, you know, I guess not get used to, but the consequence is, would be longer response times, which is something I know we're striving for, that three, those three minutes, and we're at the four. But this, you know, six, between four and seven minutes could be, you know...
Life.
Exactly. So this is, that's a little concerning.
Definitely, definitely. And what, and the last line there is ultimately, you know, you get lower patient satisfaction and, you know, citizen satisfaction because they're having to wait, you know, for an ambulance or a fire agent to come. So moving along to the next, with that being said, we do have excellent resuscitation statistics. So last year, we had 36 witness cardiac arrests and 56 unwitnessed cardiac arrests, and out of those, we resuscitated 24 people, which is 26%. The national average is eight. So I think that's kudos to our clinicians for the great work that they do. You will see there was one civilian fire death, and that's kind of misleading. We actually were never called to that call. We found out about it from the state fire marshal. So the individual had a fire inside of their residence. We were never called. They went to the hospital, developed an infection, and passed away from injuries from the burn. So it's kind of misleading, but it does count as a civilian fire death for our fire district, unfortunately, in the state's eyes. So there were two civilian fire injuries that were minor, that were reported. The property value and contents saved from fire was just under $44 million, while we lost just over $3 million. So it's a pretty good investment, a pretty good trade-off, I would say, to be able to save that amount of property and contents in the course of a year. As the president said, our response times tend to be under that four-minute threshold currently, but that's something that we do monitor on a monthly and quarterly basis. Our fire marshal's office is a significant impact on life safety within the city. You can see some of the work they've done there, 181 building plan reviews, almost 1,400 commercial fire inspections. So that's inspecting your restaurants, your libraries, your churches, your things like that in the course of a year, and generated over $550,000 in revenue for the city. That's a four-person department, one of those being an admin person. So that's, they do tremendous work, and they also ensure not just the safety for the citizens, but the safety for the first responders. I've had some questions about some of the safety of some of the newer construction going on in the area, and we have some of the most fire-safe buildings in our fire district that are anywhere in the country. And that's due to the fire marshal's office and the strong presence that they have throughout the building process. And then the numerous community events that you see us attend throughout the area that's all over our social media stuff. So with regards to some opioid overdose and some SWIFT numbers, 92 opioid-related calls last year, which was actually slightly down. I know before I told Councilwoman Jackson that opioid calls were up, but when we played it out over the course of the year, they were actually down, and we think that's through some of the work, not just locally, but the state-level initiatives as well. We do have a new initiative for SWIFT that's coming up, and we've just rolled it out within the last couple of weeks. So we respond to over 1,400 subject-falling calls a year, which again is about 12%, 13% of our call volume. These could be people who just fall out of a chair, trip over a curb, whatever it may be. So this team has developed what's called a SAFE initiative, where they go out, this team goes out in addition to some of the opioid calls and the other low-acuity calls, and they do a home health assessment. They actually bring in a physical therapist into the home to do a fall risk assessment. So using some of the guidance provided by the CDC. And they're actually presenting on this new SAFE initiative next week in Tampa at a national conference. So it's something to be said about this group. We're very fortunate to have them. There's over 200 patients currently enrolled and monitored by SWIFT on a daily basis. So they're not all actively engaged with SWIFT. They may, what we call, graduate, but they still stay in the system. Should they re-enter the hospital, they would be flagged and come up in our system. So and then some of the numbers there about MDCN, which is the purple car that goes around town, the low-acuity calls, 691 calls last year with 125 people treated on the scene and not requiring to be transported. So they were, that was a reduction in costs for the hospital of $225,000, which we owe them a great deal of gratitude for being a partner in that because they provide us a nurse practitioner for that program to be successful at no cost to the city. So and then they just started community outreach. I don't know if you saw that social media post last, or last week? They were at Narcan, they were handing out Narcan, I believe it was at...
Shelter.
At the shelter. They were out there doing that. That was their first, and that was part of the grant that was just accepted a couple of weeks ago. Something I haven't really talked about is our tactical medic program that we have. We've had it, it kind of flies under the radar. There's only two people on the team, but they do phenomenal work. They have a specialized training program, and they work with 17 different police agencies in 2024. So most importantly, most notably, obviously, City PD, where they assisted them 29 different times. And we're happy to report there were no civilian injuries and no officer injuries in any of the incidents that they were involved with. They also completed 12 training days and provided training to SPD on wound care, Narcan, and basic first aid. And then just some highlights on what lies ahead. So the department was selected to be a part of NERIS. So part of our, the National Fire Incident Data Reporting System is going away, and NERIS is a new reporting system that the federal government is rolling out, and we're one of the first 100 departments in the country to be a part of that. So we were asked, and we're very proud, we're waiting for our software vendor to switch over, and we will be on board with that. But it's a great thing. As you know, because I've been here plenty of times about the grants, we received over $600,000 in grants in 2024, which is great. Another, another key, you know, highlight for us was our volunteer intake is up. So we have taken in 12 new volunteers since July 1st, which is significant for our department. So they've got a lot of training ahead of them, they've got some classes to take, and before we can see a return on that investment. But nonetheless, we have a, we have a strong volunteer presence that's slowly coming back, which is good to see. And then our volunteer component also recently purchased a couple drones, and while you may laugh, but drones are the trend in the fire service with regards to pre-plans, search and rescue, and then after incident, you know, reconstruction and things like that, they're able to get there. There was an incident up in Talbot County where a plane crashed in the river, and their county GIS showed up, deployed the drone before the divers could get in the water, went out to the plane and said, "Look, this is recovery, not a rescue." And they were back in, and that was the drone being able to go out there before the divers could get in the water and get out there. So just something to think about, and we're excited about that, working with the GIS department to move that forward. And then the last slide, I don't have up there, but that is a link. We will be rolling that out. That's the community risk assessment that I've talked about. Councilwoman Gregory, there's a part in there where you can type in your address to find out how far you are away from the fire station, broken down zero to two, two to four, four to eight. So anybody that's thinking about buying a house can go in there, type the address in, and find out just how far away the fire department is, along with a bunch of other things about the major risks that affect our area. So we're not quite done. We've got the EMS part to put into it, but I wanted to put that out there for council to review. So that's kind of all I have. I know I kind of went through that quick, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
First, we definitely appreciate the review that you give us, one multiple times a year, but of course, the end-of-the-year update. Again, we apologize about the screen not being available. Chief, do you mind if we make this available to the public in the minute or publish this? Okay, so Ms. English would make this available so that the community can see this and see these statistics as well, and thank you for that. Council, any questions or comments on the items presented?
I just had a quick question. What does NERIS stand for again? I didn't, I couldn't catch...
National, you're asking me. National Emergency Response Incident Software, I believe, NERIS is the acronym for it. It's the new, everybody, all the departments in the country will have to switch that by 2026, but they're taking on early onboarders. They initially did a rollout with six departments across the country, and then they opened it up to 100, and we were in that second group of 100.
Way to go.
Any, you mentioned, but since we kind of tapped into it, any update or new buzz with the agreement with the county?
So we were able to get the additional funding, the additional $400,000 that's been allocated. I believe the city's invoiced that. And actually, the mayor and Andy and myself have a meeting on Wednesday to discuss our next steps with meeting with the county executive. So other than that, I really don't have anything, unless they have anything as far as progress. It's definitely moving forward in the right direction. I think that all parties are on board, and, you know, we just need to come to a consensus and put some ink on some paper and move this forward before the end of the budget.
Yeah, the check, yeah.
I think it's just really important, as you think about us being a large-scale career firefighting department, and you hear of all the great things that we are doing, and all that has a cost associated with it. And I think through the SWAT analysis that the county has recently done and understanding we are moving toward that direction, that there is real cost associated with being able to provide this level of care. And if you strive to provide that level of care, you've got to invest in those operations. So that is going to be part of our narrative as we go forward in this upcoming contract. But, you know, appreciate everything that Rob's doing, and all the stats and all the mapping that we have with the GIS team helps us craft a good narrative that we can support when we go do our presentations.
Appreciate it. Well, best of luck to you all when you go to those tables. Yes, if there are no other questions?
Thank you. Outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the shelter because that's definitely a preventive, preventive measure.
Absolutely.
And Chief, are you handling the next...
Yeah, Eric's sick.
Oh, so we have an, oh, yeah, something's going over there. An ordinance to add and edit language regarding the counting method for false alarms. So I'll let you take over from there.
Sure. So this is a pretty simple ordinance request. It's just to clarify some language. So what we've ran into, if you're not aware, the city does have a false alarm ordinance where they fine for so many false alarms. For instance, after the first three incidents, it's a $45 fine. After the fourth, it's 90, and after the fifth and subsequent, it's $135 in offense. The problem we're running into is apartment complexes that are on one alarm system, but they have multiple buildings. So for instance, the alarm system, the main panel may be, and I'm making this number up, 555 Main Street, but in that apartment complex, there may be 551, 553, 555, 557 that are all tied in to the same alarm panel. And there's no, there's been some, you know, disagreement between, you know, what is and what isn't the same alarm system and whether finance should issue the, you know, citation or not. So what this does is it clarifies it and says that, basically, it defines what an alarm site is and what the location is, and that, you know, for instance, the main panel, regardless of if it serves one building or seven buildings, is that's the same alarm system. So we're not going out and doing, you know, having to get multiple addresses, multiple false alarms at multiple addresses before we can then issue, you know, a fine to get the problem fixed. And it does, this does have a significant impact, and we do see a definite reduction... And it does, this does have a significant impact, and we do see a definite reduction in repeat calls by having this.
This is good. Just a curious, and again, I know you all worked it out, but why use the word track of land instead of any other parcel or anything like that? Why, why use that language in the legislation? If I'm looking at the right.
Yeah, you're looking at the addition of eight oh four oh five?
Yes.
That's just a legal term?
Okay.
Is there a concern with that?
No, no, I was just making sure that that, that definitely meets what, I was making sure the language was make, was, was going to meet what the, you know, with, with the counting of alarms, which is not, you know, not a parcel, but tracks. So track of land counted, I'm thinking of like a, like a business as well, I know apartment complexes, but a business that it would, it would also do the same thing. So as long as it, as it fits the muster.
Do you want to add, or any other tracked or parcel of land to be all-inclusive?
I just, I would just make sure that it, that it just, that it defined what you all wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
This track of land just kind of, I don't know why that, that stuck out my mind, because when I think of track of land, I think of census tracks. That's what I, but that's all I deal with, so I don't know if this was a legalese term, and if, if so, then I, then I trust it. But parcel, I know that that is a defining term for land and for, and for properties.
I think, at your concern, Council President, we should just add track or parcel of land.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry. Counsel, any, oh, counsel, any other questions or concerns? All right, do we have consensus to move forward with that addition?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
All right.
All right, we'll bring up Water Works Director Corey Cameron for an FY 2025 Water and Sewer Capital Fund Budget Amendments. Good evening, Ms. Cameron. The floor is yours.
So the first one I have is for a PFAS study and treatment at the Park Water Plant. We have a plan at the Paleo Water Plant, and we're already in design for our PFAS treatment at the Paleo Water Plant. We don't have a finished plan at the Park, I'm going to stop doing that, at the Park Plant. We have some ideas, but we don't have a plan on paper. So what we would like to do is move this money from the wells into the study account and fast-track a study. And what we would like to do is move this study forward. We have lots of ideas, lots of things we need to explore, drilling deeper wells, treatment at the plant, treatment away from the plant, what we're going to do to treat PFAS at Park Plant. The reason we'd like to fast-track this and get started on this in right now is because the last opportunity to apply for federal funding for PFAS specifically is next January. And so we feel like we can get a study moving right now, get it done, have a plan for what we're going to do for this plant, for the plant, because currently, treatment's supposed to be in place by 2029. So we want to get this moving, there's not a lot of time. So we have the money in the Park Well Field restoring for rehab, and so this is kind of right there, because it's what are we going to do with the wells? We're going to be boring deeper wells, taking some samples, seeing what the water quality is a little lower, seeing if we can get away from the PFAS, although I understand that water's a little dirtier, so then we might have to put in filters. So there's a lot of moving parts, so we feel like we really need to get this going because we're running out of time here. So it's just a matter of transferring a hundred thousand dollars from the, the one part over to the other, and then there's, to get it going, and then there's another part where we're going to use to do the bench study at Paleo Plant. We have a plan there, we're putting in GAC filtration. What the bench study is going to do out there is tell us how long the filter media will last, how often it has to be replaced, you know, based on the PFAS that we have in the water. So moving all this money is going to allow us to move forward and do that.
I was trying to look up when we, when we approved ordinance twenty-eight seventy, when we, the original sixty thousand dollars, yeah, and I think it was sometime around June. So, so has any, yes, it was, it was, has anything progressed since June and now with, when we appropriated those funds?
At the Paleo Plant, we're moving forward out there. We're just about to sixty percent design.
Okay.
And we plan to have a finished design by May of this year, so then we can move forward with the construction side. So, yeah, we are moving forward at Paleo, but that's why I say we, we have not moved forward with Park, so we really need to get that going.
Sure. Counsel, any questions?
I don't know, I'm just very much for the study, so the PFAS, you know how I feel about it.
Yeah.
You have consensus to move, to move this forward?
Yes.
Great. Next, the, the Elevated Water Tank Maintenance Project.
Yeah, so Salisbury University Tower is in, is, needs to be painted. I don't know if you've noticed it lately, but it's starting to show somewhere. So we need to paint it. Because of the size of that tower, it's pretty expensive to paint that one. We just painted the ground storage tank at the Paleo Plant. I don't know if you've been by and noticed it, but it looks really good. So we have seventy thousand dollars left from that project that I'd like to transfer over to the Elevated Storage Tank Maintenance, so, and that would given us the additional funds we need to paint SU Tower. So that's what that's about. And then, real quick, I had someone, some, a customer email me this morning and asked me if I could speak also about Edgemore Avenue Water Tower, because that looks horrible. That's actually in the CIP to be taken down, because we want to get rid of that tank. That tank was put up in nineteen fifty-six, and it has lead paint on it. And to repair that tower would cost a fortune, and it really does not work well for our system. We have water in it, but it really would only be good if there was a fire in that neighborhood, because the Paleo Plant and the SU Tower overpower that, that tank. What we have to do is every night when we cut the plant back, we have a pump and we force water out of the tank to turn it over. But really, when the Paleo pump, when the Paleo Plant is pumping and we're sending water downtown to SU Tower, it just keeps that tank full and keeps on passing it. The tower sits too low, so it's, it's not a useful tower for us. So the best thing to do would be to get rid of that tower. So it's in the CIP to take it down. It would cost a fortune to paint that one.
Thank you for, for, for explaining that and for answering that question for the constituent, but also for us as well. Counsel, any questions?
SU Tower. Have we ever asked SU to contribute to?
Well, we did just reach out to them about, they, they pay for their logo on there. So we did just reach out to them and ask them if they wanted to renew that, and the answer was yes, so they'll pay, they'll pay that part of it. But that's probably going to be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars of probably a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar project, so.
Really that much? You can't pay that?
Yeah, it's expensive.
I'll do it for two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter.
So, yeah, it's because it's so big, it's too many gallons, it's, it's big.
We should sell spaces like they do it.
Yeah. Fortunately, it's just the bowl, we don't have to do the stem like we did Warwick, we had to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've also looked, contacted the paint manufacturer, because we expected the paint to last longer, and it did. So we're, we also are reaching out to them and like, is this the best paint that, you know, the paint that we had on it before, is this the best product? We want something to last a good twenty-five years if we could, so, so we're also looking into that.
I wonder why my mind just thought about, and again, they're the painting experts, so I'll leave that to them, but again, with our eastern shore region and the, the air and salt, yeah, that's where my mind just went to, but again, they're the experts and I, I trust, but.
Could there be a clear coat put on it? I'm just asking, because a lot of things that are being painted now, to keep it from being eroded or anything, they're putting clear coats on them. I know it probably will cost a lot more money.
Yeah, I've never heard of that before on water towers, so possibly.
Just as.
Thank you for that. Seeing there were the questions from council, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, all right, great. And then next, the budget amendment for the Naylor Mill Water Main Extension Project.
Yeah. Before we go into that, because we have a couple involved, I, I was, there was some confusion about the lead service line.
You want to skip?
So I was going to give a little background on that, and then I'm going to bring Amanda Pollack up to help with the money side of that. So, so the lead service line inventory was due to MDE and EPA back in October of 2024. All water systems were required nationwide to turn in a lead service line inventory, which we did, City of Salisbury did, and I don't know, people may have gotten in the mail, we're sending out. Any homes is, concerns, any homes older than nineteen eighty-six have a possibility of having lead somewhere in their plumbing. So this is the first time ever that we have been responsible for replacing pipe beyond the meter to someone's home. So the city's always been responsible up to the meter, and after that, it's the homeowner's responsibility for the plumbing. What this inventory is including is from the meter to the home, and so up into the home. We won't go inside of the house, but we'll go up to the house, and that's not plumbing that we put in, that's plumbing that was put in by the homeowner or the builder. So there's a lot of things out there that we don't know, like so far from our surveys, we still have seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight unknowns. So as we've looked into this, you know, we, we identified a section of the city where we found some older homes that had plumbing all the way back to the, like, eighteen eighties, you know, which is before our water system even started, but we dug into that, and there was a Salisbury water system before us. So there's some old homes with some old plummings. We've had some good response, we've had, we've found some, some homes that we have were comprising a list. So last year, we applied for federal funding because there was some specific funding allocated for lead, for lead replacement. So we, and that's where we got this funding, and that's what this next part's going to be about, but that's what that's about. Then we're going to hire someone, we're going to go out, these people then have lead service lines or that we need to identify, we'll be able to go out, identify these lines, and if they do turn out to be lead, we can replace them right then. So far, we only have one that's been identified as lead. Through the years, we have always, if we found any lead, we've replaced it, so we don't think there's a lot out there, but there could very well be in these old homes, you know, on the customer side, so that's what this is about. So now I'm going to ask Amanda to come up, and then she'll go a little bit more into the, the ordinance and the.
Good evening, Ms.
Good evening. All right, so going off of what Corey just said, so we have a budget amendment before you to forward fund the projects that are funded by Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration. So last year at about this time, a little bit over a year ago, we were here to talk about the Naylor Mill Water Main Extension, and in January of 2024, you passed an ordinance to forward fund some of the funding that would carry us through design of the Naylor Mill Water Main Project. At that time, you had allocated seven hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for design and administration, and to date, two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred of that has been encumbered. We came in under budget with design. The city hired AMT Engineering, and the design is essentially complete. So they are in the process of getting permits, and we hope to have all permits in hand this month, and as soon as all the, the funding is lined up, we'll be able to advertise that for bids. So from last year's ordinance, there's still four hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars available. But the reason we need to continue to forward fund these projects is this funding mechanism through the state of Maryland is a reimbursement. And on projects that go to construction, the state of Maryland doesn't officially approve the funding until you bid the construction contract. So once the construction contract is in hand, MDE takes the entire package to the Maryland Board of Public Works. Then the Board of Public Works approves the funding allocation, and you can start submitting for reimbursements. So for Naylor Mill and the other two projects we'll talk about, we looked at a cash flow analysis and looked at, okay, if we bid the project, we get BPW approval, we start getting invoices from a contractor, to get reimbursed, you have to have a cleared check, so you have to have paid the contractor, receive that back, file for reimbursement, then it takes about a month to two months, I think we, we budgeted in two months in the cash flow analysis, just to be safe. The same process we did with the Salisbury University Tower, the wastewater treatment plant, and a couple other projects. So, so we looked at what money would be needed to get these projects rolling. So in addition to the Naylor Mill, which is funding that was awarded two years ago now, this past year, you were awarded funding for the lead service line replacement project that Corey was talking about, and we'll call this Phase One, because this was one neighborhood in Salisbury that was identified. So this would be the funding that would start the design, because that project had, you've just been awarded that money, but it's not been started. And then also the PFAS study at the Paleo Water Treatment Plant. So this goes along with what Corey was saying earlier with the bench study, to be able to confirm the size of the, the treatment systems that are under design at Paleo. The difference with this PFAS study is because that money is study-only, you don't need to wait for construction. So as soon as that study has been awarded, that can go to the Board of Public Works and reimbursements can start. The lead service line, there would be a design component again, so after design, we bid the construction contract. Once those construction bids come in, we go to the Board of Public Works. So, so again, that, this forward funding is needed to get through Board of Public Works' approval, but then once that happens, you'll be able to get reimbursed on a regular basis. So we worked with your Director of Finance and Bond Counsel to look at, you know, a reasonable schedule for these. The other thing I wanted to point out, and it's in the ordinance, it defines what type of funding you've received from the state. So for most of the projects, it's loan principal forgiveness. So the state still has you fill out all documents as if this was a loan, but there will be principal forgiveness at the end, so it essentially acts as a grant, but the state treats it as a loan. So that's the, the mechanism that they have, that we have available to us, so that means there's a lot of extra paperwork versus a grant, but it's still operating on a similar basis. That being said, for the lead service line project, you have a combination of loan principal forgiveness and a straight-up loan, a low-interest loan from the state. So as Corey had mentioned earlier, that right now, next year's the last year to apply for PFAS funding, it's also going to be the last year to apply for the lead service line funding. So the bipartisan infrastructure law earmarks specific money for emerging contaminants like PFAS and for lead service line replacements. And so last year, last January, when we applied for the lead service line money, we had talked to some other towns, like the town of Berlin, and they had received a lot of money for lead service lines. And as Corey mentioned, this is the first time that federal funding has been available to replace the service all the way up to the house. So it's a huge service to the residents to be able to have that funded, because they, you know, as you know, the residents own the line from the meter to the house. So even though there is a, a loan component, a significant portion of this is loan principal forgiveness, and it's a, it's a massive opportunity to be able to, to do this for the residents. Yes, so the first ordinance, I think, I think I covered everything with that one. So that, like I said, we had looked at what would be needed to forward fund those projects and identified an additional two hundred and fifty thousand for Naylor Mill, and then four hundred and ten thousand for lead service lines, and fifty thousand for the PFAS study to forward fund. So again, once those go through BPW approval, you'll be able to start getting reimbursed for all that money. I know that was a lot, so.
That makes more sense. I was trying to make sense of it when I read it, and, and I, I think I told the clerk, I sent an email, I just said, make sure that you all are prepared to present this and explain this well, and you did just that. So most of the questions I had have been answered. My only, and it's just, you know, my, my question, so the, and I see that it references, references the international, sorry, Internal Revenue Code for nineteen eighty-six, and so that's the same, if, if the home or the dwelling was built in, in nineteen eighty-six or?
Before.
Before? Okay. I just, because I know nineteen seventy-eight is like the lead, lead-based paint rules, I was wondering why that's nineteen eighty-six and not seventy-eight?
Well, Maryland actually, nationwide, it's nineteen eighty-six. Maryland actually cut it in the seventies. Yeah, but, but, you know, someone couldn't have a piece of that plumbing out there, so, you know.
That was my, so if, okay, I just wanted to just make sure we say that, and, and, okay, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions?
That's amazing.
Okay, and that covered?
No, we still have the other item.
No, no, I was just, I'm trying to check off, so yeah, that covered, that covered the lead service line replacement Phase One, correct?
No, not that. So that's the declaration of official intent. I didn't, I didn't hit that one yet.
But you, okay, you just touched on the actual loan for, loan for that.
Yeah, so the other thing you have, the resolution, so that is the declaration of official intent to borrow for the lead service line project. So that was prepared by Bond Counsel, and because there is a loan component to the lead service line project, you pass this declaration of an official intent saying, we will be borrowing on this loan. This enables you to spend money before the loan closes. And again, it's all just the semantics of you can't close the loan until it goes to the Board of Public Works, so you file this declaration of official intent to borrow. This enables you to start the project before you can close the loan. So that was, we worked with Lindsey Rader to prepare that resolution.
I'm clear now, thank you. That was the, yes, that was the Naylor Mill Road Extension Project PFAS Study and Lead Service Line Replacements. Okay, that was the resolution to say we could do that. Perfect. Counsel, any questions on that particular resolution?
No.
Great. Do we have consensus to move forward with, with both of those above items?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
PFAS.
Very educational.
All right, so we'll bring up Chief Mineshine for an ordinance on Towing Companies Code Update. I think we have Captain Felds coming as well. Good evening.
After that, I think what we have is.
It should be, it should be.
Pretty straight.
Yes, yes.
We planned it that way.
Who knew water could be, yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Good evening.
Counsel President, as, as you had requested, we had met with the tow companies to make some adjustments, just get their input from some adjustments to our, our tow ordinance. We did so, and we just wanted to kind of brief you on that, and also some of the suggested changes that came out of that meeting, as well as what we had, we were looking at trying to change. Going back to two, August of '22, when the dis-ordinance was last updated, there were some things that were left out or that needed to be corrected. So here we are now on 2025, trying to make some of these corrections. Just to let everybody know, we have 33 tow companies, 33 tow companies on the list now, and it's, it is a, really honestly, it's a full-time job just to manage that, those companies on the list. But we are trying to clean up the, probably, honesty, just hold, hold, honestly, they're expecting us, I think they're, the tow companies, operators are expecting a little more of us as far as continuity and, and what, how we're running things with tow companies, but we're also holding the, these folks accountable as well, going forward to what our standards are going to be as far as what we expect from them. So I'm going to turn the, turn it over to Captain Felds, just to go through some of the suggested changes, and then we'll, we'll have any questions, yeah?
Appreciate it, and thank you, Chief, again, for meeting with the, the tow companies.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. We'll just hop right into it. They are 5.65 correction, 5.64.105C, 5.64110, and 5.64160. Suggested language that we have placed in there is to update that code to clarify the ability for the Chief of Police to suspend tow companies for violations. Under 5.64160, we seek to set standards for repeated violations, to include revocation upon finding excessive violations. That also clarifies that any renewal that may be going on at the time would not be completed until their term of suspension had been served, basically. 5.64.080, that shores up language concerning the length of time after being convicted of a crime when someone is eligible to receive a tow license to tow at the request of the city. The current wording addresses a conviction date, but that would, uh, sorry.
What, what line number is that?
Because I'm lost, I'm looking for the number.
5.64.180, what line number is that?
Point 080.
Yes.
Starting at 96.
196?
Starting, 5.64080 starts at line 96.
Okay.
Yes, we've suggested language in there that would address someone who was completing the sentence.
You all were with me? Yes. It was, we were at the bottom of the ordinance, then we went back up.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, thank you, yes.
Are we there?
We're all set, yep, good.
So we, we've put that in so that would address, you know, if someone's on parole or probation, if they got more than a three-year sentence, the way the language is now, they would be eligible to actually get a tow license the day they stepped out. So we wanted to kind of shore that up a little bit with some of this language. Now, 5.64.040G, each tow company is required to have a Department of Transportation inspection done every year. That is mu- much more comprehensive than the inspection that we, as the city do. We want to use that inspection as part of our inspection. We do have a couple of things that are added to that, like they don't have brooms, a debris container, or shovel, or drying agent that's on their inspection, so we would still do that portion of it. But like I said, the DOT inspection is much more comprehensive than the one we're doing now, so we wanted to use that so that we're not doing double duty for what they're already having done. Any questions about that one?
No.
Yes, the only, so with the annual, yearly tow license application, so, so, because I'm not familiar with the DOT's annual submittal, you know, submission, if I, if the, if my yearly tow license application is June 1st, but I came, but I got the, if mine expires on May 31st, to make sure I do the dates right, essentially, I want to make, are the dates going to align?
Yes, we spoke to the tow companies, and most of their inspections are September or October, which would push us into that January timeframe, so they would be within like three months of when we were doing that.
Got it, perfect, that's it, that's all I, thank you. I was going to add language in it to make sure that it, yeah.
And 5.64.105B specifies that a tow company must keep itemized invoices on file for two years. In that same section, we put some language in there at this point, which gives us an avenue for tow companies to charge for additional time spent on excessive cleanup. Coming out of our meeting with the tow companies, you know, they do have times when there are excessive amounts of cleanup that they need to do, and one of the examples that I give, we had a vehicle that actually struck the abutment at the overhead bridge, and it struck it so hard that the engine came out, went over the, behind the CMP, where CMP telephone used to be, so it took them hours to clean that up. We don't expect anyone to put that kind of time into something without, you know, being reimbursed in some way, shape, or form. So we put that in there so that we've got an avenue for that, that would allow counsel to set the rates for that periodically, just like all the other fees that we set rates for. That's the reason we put that in there. 5.64.110.
Captain.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to, only because I know that this has been a journey, I want to make sure we, should we add in, or should we, additional labor fees shall be established from time to time by ordinance? That's just talking about the fees that council, in, in our schedule of fees, not talking about the approval of that invoice on your end, is that?
Yeah, well, what would happen was, they would have the invoices said, okay, this is the reason that we needed to do this, and then it would basically be, all the tow companies would have basically the same amount of time for a given tow. Like if two companies did it, they should be able to do it in just about the same amount of time. This gives them the avenue to charge for that, and yes, it would come back to us, it would say, the tow company owner, operator would say, these are the things that we needed to do, that's reasonable.
Should we add some language just to, for the approval process, or just make sure that, that there's no confusion, that, that you all have the discretion whether to assess if that invoice is, is justified?
Is it in here on, in line B, additional labor fees shall be established from time to time by the ordinance?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Because we had the issue where, where it was kind of ambiguous, and the tow companies were like, oh, I can just charge, and, and then you all ran into that, and we got calls, and so I just, I want to make sure we add in that, you know, so, because this, if I'm a tow, tow.
So council, just to be clear, council is setting the, the fee rates.
Yes.
But the police department is deciding whether they can be charged or not, right?
Yes.
So I, so I can make that clarification.
I think we should, yeah, that's, yeah, thank you, I think we should just make that clear, written here, just so there's no, because.
Applicable, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. I just want to make sure you all are.
Yeah.
Do you want to work that language out now? Do you want to read it, or do you want us to go?
I, I, I would, I think it'd just be easier for me to make the amendments, because there's already some other changes that are going to occur, and then that way you can see the red lines to all of the changes at the time.
Counsel, basically, okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, 5.64.110D, that simply removes the proper name crash rap from, so that we don't run into any issues with that. There are a couple of corrections to what, that we're recommending from what you received in your packet. 5.64040J, if you look in that section, it refers to Part I crimes in there still. We wanted to firm up that language so that the language, this was the same throughout the entire ordinance at this point. Right now, it refers to a Part I crime, whereas everything that we've recommended prior to this, the language states completion of any sentence to include parole or probation involving an aggravated assault, rape, murder, robbery, arson, burglary, larceny, distribution or possession with intent to distribute narcotics or motor vehicle theft within three years. So that was the recommendations we made throughout the remainder of the code, so we wanted that to read the same way.
And if counsel has any question on the actual language, I think it's line 87 through 90, right there, NK, just below it, I think that's, that's what you're wanting to change.
Yes, and we wanted to fill that line, if you look under J, under 72, I believe it's line.
76.
76 is where it refers to Part I crimes, there are no more Part I crimes.
Okay.
So it spells out the crimes as opposed to referring to the Part I crime that no longer exists. And coming out of our meeting with the tow companies, 5.64.120, we're suggesting removal of that section under, I believe it's D. Yes, if we can, we're suggesting removing that, because currently, we have a QR code that we're giving to everyone on their crash documents at the scene, which gives them the appropriate fees at the time, so the tow company doesn't, they had mentioned that this was an expense to them, they didn't necessarily need. So with us having this QR code that keeps those fees up to date for everyone to be able to see, I don't know that it's necessary for them to have to keep up with the fees along with us. So if we could, we're suggesting to take that out, so that's not a burden on them. And if that is approved under 5.64.160, our recommended changes, that would need to come out of line 280, where it says, failure to provide tow rates. That's all the recommendations we have. If you have any questions?
Sure. Counsel, any questions, comments? Okay, first, again, thank you all for, for having that meeting with the, with the operators. I think that, that was good, and it showed a good, good faith effort, and, and it helped clear up, you know, some of this, and then it looks like, you know, you all had some, some fruitful conversations, so it was, it was definitely good. Counsel, saying?
So I am understanding that there's going to be three separate changes to this ordinance. Do you want it to come back to work session with those changes, or are you comfortable with me making the changes and moving it to legislative session, understanding of the three changes that were discussed?
Counsel?
As we move it forward.
If you could, if you can, can you clearly just state, you know, for the record, the, the changes, and then if we have those, if we're all in, you know, consensus, then I would say we move it forward to legislative.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the record, and Captain Felds.
Ms. Bush, do you mind just pulling your, you mind pulling your, yes? Thank you, Counselwoman.
Sure. Captain Felds, now, correct me if I am mistaken, or if I overlook anything. So the first change would be to, on line 76, replacing Part I crimes, basically mirroring the language that you find in lines 87 to 89, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The next change would be to lines 196 to 200, this is to address Council President's concern, basically, that the council is setting the rates, but it's SPD who is then charging and assessing whether those additional rates are paid or not, to make that clear.
That's correct.
And then, moving forward to line 254, that's subsection D, where it's striking that?
Yes.
In its entirety, correct?
Yes.
And then in line 280, striking the language and failure to provide tow rates.
Yes, striking the reference to them having the rights.
Yes.
Our apologies for those last-minute changes, Counsel President. We had two, actually, two separate meetings with the tow group, and after this got moved forward, there were a couple things that we felt, just to capture it, make sure it's right, with the first time when we get it through.
Listen, I, I, listen, this has been good, and I'm glad that they are, it seems like, moving along and on, on a similar page with, with you all, so that, no, I, you know, we definitely appreciate it, so.
President Dowd, on an annual basis, I know we, at one point, the, the tow companies were charging more because they were having a percentage of those toes not getting paid by the customer. What percentage do they not pay, do you know, either for the extras that they have to get in, in the case of a bigger accident? And then the second is, who pays that bill? Is there any way we, you know, we're spending on an annual basis roughly on that topic?
Well, it, it's anywhere probably from, depending on, from the meeting we had with them, maybe 30% sometimes that they're not getting paid for some of these, maybe. We haven't delved into that part of it yet, that's just the basic information.
But they don't come to us to get paid, they just take it as a hit and make it up on the others, is how it works? Okay, okay, okay.
That's one way to put it.
Okay, yeah.
And oftentimes, what will happen is eventually, if the, if the bill's not paid, they can get rid of that vehicle and recoup a portion of that. Obviously, it's not what, all of what they would have charged necessarily, but there is a portion of that that would come back to them for having abandoned vehicle there.
They can apply for salvage rights on the vehicle.
Okay.
We just had this discussion, how about, three years ago? Three, four years ago? So I'm, I'm really glad that you all sat and discussed it, and had this discussion with the tow companies first, so they could agree on some of the things that you're changing and asking, yeah, before they come, because they came in here.
Yeah, no, that was August of 2022, exactly.
Yeah.
But.
I hope you remember.
They didn't remember, yes.
I know, I remember.
No, it was, it was a good meeting, but again, there's 33 companies on the list, so we anticipate, we'll, we'll see where it goes going forward, because we, we are going to be looking at a lot more folks. We're putting more of our own resources into managing the, this process as well, so. And we did promise, and we said we would have a meeting with them prior to discussing the tow fees coming up in, in the new fiscal budget year, so we told them we'd have another meeting, so.
Yes, I'm glad you, yeah, I, I couldn't make it, but, and, and again, chief, chief invited, but I said, no, you all take, you know, take it, and it seems like you all did a good job of that conversation, so, you know, I, I, I agree, Counselwoman Jackson, and, you know, thank you all for taking that small nugget from counsel, just to have a quick little meeting with them and, and getting it all out of the way. So hopefully, you know, this, this puts them in better alignment with, with the community and the tow fees and all those things, so.
I hope so. I know that's probably going to be addressed when it's time to go over the fees. A lot of what they had brought up in the meetings can be addressed by what's already in the codes, just some things that we need to tighten up there, but, yeah, they're definitely going to have a voice when it comes to time to hear about the tow fees.
Oh, yes, yes, good. Well, with that, Counsel, we have consensus to move forward with the, with the amendments and the changes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, moving forward to the public comment portion of the agenda. And with that, moving forward to the public comment portion of the agenda, again, on the above items, if there, any member of the public would like to speak, please go to the podium. Again, these are on the above items of the agenda for the work session, and you have three minutes to speak, so welcome you at any time. And if you can just state your name, and if you are a city resident, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the information about the lead paint, the lead, lead pipes. I do have a question. I, I do have multiple units in Salisbury. I received a letter concerning identifying the lead service for my personal home, but I did not get any of those letters for the other homes where I have other occupants, so I did not get that communication. So I don't know whether it was sent to the, to the address and not to the registered owner, and I think it should have been sent to the owner, because we would be the ones ultimately paying for that renovation project or applying for those grants and loans. Is there some way to backtrack that? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it depends.
If you want, if you all want to work, administration, if, if, Ms. Corf, you want to, is there a?
We can go over that.
Okay.
Then we can chat for a second right after.
Okay. I mean, because I got my own personal one, and I kept waiting for the others to come, so that I could then answer them in an appropriate manner, and they never showed up, so I didn't know what happened. On all the other properties? Okay, we'll talk afterwards, but technically, we can't have a banter. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and to be fair, Ms. Breiten did mention that before, so if, if we can make sure that Ms. Breiten gets that information, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Oh, Len Breiten, City of Salisbury.
Yeah.
I can't top that, but I'll try. Robert Taylor, City of Salisbury. This dovetails, I think, nicely with Black History Month. Here in this room last week, the county council voted to settle the suit brought by the NAACP regarding the county council's districts. So we will now have, as of the next election, seven districts instead of five. We won't have any more at-large districts, they'll be gone, they'll all be separate seven districts. This will affect the City of Salisbury significantly, because there will be two, what they call minority-majority districts. And to create that second district, it runs more or less through the City of Salisbury, from northwest to southeast. It's a large district, it's District 3. I happen to be redistrict into it, and I can tell you, there are a lot of people in Salisbury that will be redistricted, either into that district or some other district, because now there'll be seven, there'll be smaller districts than five, just do the math, they got to be smaller. So I just point that out. And also, with Black History Month, I might point out, the five-to-two system resulted about 35 years ago, when the Department of Justice brought a lawsuit against the county. They also sued the city. The city had at-large election districts until about 30, 35 years ago, and that has changed. And I think it was Ms. Jackson's father, if I remember. He either brought that action, or there was another action. We had until about 35 years ago, what they called non-resident voters in Salisbury. If you owned property here, but didn't live here, you could still vote in the elections. That ended about roughly 35 years ago as well. I compliment the fire department on everything. I think when we have presentations like this, we need to really emphasize the fact that much of the fire department's services are performed outside of the city, in a district that runs through the county. And it was mentioned, we got the final $400,000 for that. I think that brings it to $2 million this year. And I think we need to look at that amount very carefully. If I'm not mistaken, Chief, I think the Salisbury Fire Department handles more calls in the county, in the county district, than all of the volunteer fire departments in the county put together. I think I'm right on that, I haven't seen that data for a while, but it gives you some idea of the magnitude of the service that's being performed, essentially, for the county. And I'll just kind of wind up. We're talking about a lot of money for the sewer and water system. I'm not against any of those amounts, I'm not, that's not my point. My only concern is that in one of the memos, it states that if we don't get some of this money from the state, we've got to come up with it, essentially. And I would point out that the state reneged on the county for the Fruitland School this year. That's in the tens of millions of dollars. Yeah, we were going to get that money up until about a year ago, and now, apparently, the county's going to have to forward fund that. So be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public?
Sad question. The water tower, I'm sorry, Von Seger's City, Citizen, Salisbury. The water tower that you spoke of earlier, is that designated for Salisbury University? Is that state-owned facility? It belongs to us, and it's our water that we use, but that they use, they, they don't pay for the water bill that they utilize.
The university, if they have a meter, and they are on city water, there is a bill associated with that.
They do pay.
Yeah. If you're talking about the actual tower, the tower is owned and operated by the City of Salisbury.
And so, the, while they're going to pay for their logo to be painted on there, is that like advertisement, do they pay the city anything for advertising on there?
That's essentially their compensation, to have that mural redone.
Just, right, for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seger. And to just, Director Cameron did say that Salisbury University was going to contribute to, to the actual repainting of the, of the water.
Logo, yeah.
Logo on there.
Just the logo.
Sorry, painting their logo, yes, on, on that.
I mean, the white backdrop, it's, I mean, it's part of the logo, right?
Yes. Thank you. Any other public comments on the above items? Okay. Seeing none. The work session, the time is now 7:17, and the work session is adjourned, and we will pivot to the legislative session. Time is still 7:17, and it is called to order. We will start by reviewing the agenda. On tonight's legislative agenda, we have an award of bid for pump station wet well cleaning, resolution number 3377, amending the Salisbury City Council Regulations and Rules of Order, ordinance number 2917, second reading, to rezone a property located at 413 Snow Hill Road, ordinance number, and ordinance number 2916, second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter to an MOU with the Wycomco County Health Department, and to appropriate funds. At this time, I've entered a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Any proposed changes or amendments to the agenda? All those in favor of adopting, of adopting the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. The agenda is adopted. We will start with procurement director Jennifer Miller for our award of bid. I will entertain a motion to, motion to award the bid, ITB A-25-110, pump station wet well cleaning to Chesapeake Environmental Services LLC, as recommended.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Very good. The Department of Procurement seeks award of bid approval from Salisbury City Council for the solicitation as noted in your packet. The city followed required bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances, and publicly posted this solicitation on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, plan of bids, and on the State of Maryland's website, E-Maryland Marketplace Advantage. So this is for ITB invitation to bid number A-25-110, pump station wet well cleaning. This is for the Department of Water Works. This contract will provide all labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals to perform the cleaning at pump station wet wells. The bid was posted on December 2, 2024. Bids were opened on January 3, 2025. We received three bids. The vendor recommended as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is Chesapeake Environmental Services from Delmar, Maryland. We estimate the cost to be about $95,100 per year. Costs will be paid out of the account noted in your packet, and this would be an annually renewable contract for up to two additional years, past the first year.
Any questions or discussion from the council? Okay. The motion on the floor is to award the bid, ITB A-25-110, pump station wet well cleaning to Chesapeake Environmental Services LLC. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. The bid for ITB A-25-110, pump station wet well cleaning, is awarded to Chesapeake Environmental Services LLC. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
This time, resolutions will be presented by our city attorney, Ashley Boucher. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3377.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Sure. Resolution number 3377. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salisbury, amending the Salisbury City Council Regulations and Rules of Order, whereas Section SC 2-6 of the Charter of the City provides that City Council shall determine its own rules and order of business. And where our City Council of the City has previously adopted regulations and rules of order by Resolution 737, as amended, and those regulations and rules of order through those various resolutions include numbers 806, 876, 972, 1043, 1335, 1386, 1451, 1476, 1577, 1600, 1672, 2072, 2251, and 2396. And whereas the City Council wishes now to update and amend its rules and regulations of order, and then, in your packet, you have the, the proposed updated regulations and rules of order, and it looks like this reflects the changes after the, the long discussion that we had, that one, the long discussion we had two meetings ago. So when it gets voted on today, we will have a clean version, and it will no longer be redlined.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
Yes, I do have one other thing when I read through the new one. We have made a decision to go from four meetings a month to two. Should there be something that refers to this under Section 8D, that a decision, when we discuss something in a work session, that it does not necessarily automatically be voted upon on the legislative session, that would come right after the work session? I think we talked about it before, that if something is discussed in a work session, that we may need a, you know, the two-week period before we vote on it at the legislative session.
I, yes. I thank you, Councilwoman DeShield, and I made mention of that, and I did tell administration that, but they, if you all want to.
No, I, I, I understand the reason we would like to have public input, if possible. There are some circumstances that we've had historically, where there is a time crunch or an emergency, where we are trying to, typically, it happens with money, with a budget amendment or grant deadline, to lose two weeks could be costly. So having that flexibility to still have that first reading afterwards, as long as there is consensus to move that forward, I'd like to be able to have that flexibility. We would typically do that by having like a special session right after a work session to have that done. Our traditional rule could be one that is typically the following meeting, to make sure we have the public have the ability to comment and digest, but I would hate to restrict that from being a possibility, if there is an appetite from council to continue to move something forward, so that we don't lose out on time-sensitive legislation. It's more the exception than the rule.
Yeah, yeah, that was kind of where we'd come to conclusion, that, you know, if it wasn't controversial, there wasn't a need, you thought, we could hold, you know, and make it part of the next, but if it wasn't, then we could move it to the first reading in legislative session. But that's where we left it.
You know, that was, I just, I wanted Councilwoman DeShield just to hear it from administration, because I did, I did relay that, but just if there is an item that is seen from the work session to legislative session, that consensus was worked out between administration and this, and the council, so, Councilwoman DeShield, I want to make sure that you're, that you are, you're comfortable with that, that usually, that we did relay that to administration, but they noted that if it's items dealing with the budget, or especially receiving funds, that they would like them to be, if, moved from the work session to the legislative session, but I want to make sure that you are, that council is 100% comfortable with that.
Okay. And the other thing on here, it goes from 11 to 13.
I want to make sure, I just want to hear.
Yes, I do. Yes.
Okay.
If, if, you know, if Mr. Kitzro and the mayor need that flexibility, I totally understand that, yes. And that it can, we have the flexibility to move it if we don't feel the need to vote on it at the legislative session.
Absolutely. I think you can just make an adjustment into the legislative meeting, saying, we're going to table this item and just remove it, so we can have further discussion.
Okay. Okay, fine. Also, in what was attached, and I may be, when I printed it out.
There's a typo.
Yeah, so.
We'll fix that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or concerns? Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve resolution number 3377. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Resolution number 3377 is adopted. This time, we'll, we'll move forward to public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak during either the public hearings, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk. They are ordinances number, ordinance numbers 2917, and 29, sorry, just orders, 2917, to rezone a property located at 413 Snow Hill Road, from R10 residential to general commercial. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance, to approve and adopt ordinance number 2917 on second reading.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
ordinance number 2917. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to rezone a property located at 413 Snow Hill Road, from R10 residential to general commercial. This is before you tonight for second reading. There's been no changes or amendments since first reading, and we also are here for a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. The time is 7:27 PM. The public hearing on ordinance number 2917 is now open. Seeing no public comments, the time is still 7:27 PM, and the public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions or discussion from council? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve and adopt ordinance number 2917. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. The motion passes, and ordinance number 2917 is approved, is adopted, or, sorry, approved. Entertaining a motion to approve, ordinance number 2916, for second reading.
So moved?
Second. Ordinance number 2916. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomco County Health Department, and approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Wycomco County Health Department, and the amount of $10,000. This is before you tonight for second reading. There's been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to approve and adopt ordinance number 2916. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye. The motion passes, and ordinance number 2916 is approved. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. This time, we'll pivot to the public comments portion of the agenda. Again, members of the public may speak or, comment public, let me cover, members of the public may comment on any topic, and are given three minutes. If you'd like to go to the podium, and again, please just state your name, and if you are a city resident.
Am I the only one tonight, for once? Nathan Cox, City of Salisbury. I've been coming to these.
I've been coming to these meetings here and there, on and off, for about two or three years. And I just wanted to note what, I've heard what the mayor and the city council people have been passionate about, and the residents have been passionate about, and take this good, take this bad, I don't know. But what I've come to see in the past few years, I wouldn't say this like a month ago, but things happen. Good way to look back at everything was, right now, we have a lot going on, obviously. We got a traffic hazard on Carroll, Carroll Road due to aesthetic infrastructure. And we got badly maintained roads and parks. And we got drownings on the Riverwalk. And we got numerous sidewalks badly maintained. A pedestrian nightmare in the northern quarter for the past two decades, and hopefully it will be fixed eventually one day. A dangerous two-way intersection near Wy High that has been bickered about for god knows how long, probably more than a decade, between the county and the Salisbury city. Numerous flooding that is happening, and I was one of the first victims of the flooding for the past twenty-four years, especially near Pep Boys and such.
That's fixed, just so you know.
Oh, yeah, fantastically enough. Finally. Twenty-four, like twelve years later, yeah. Worst public transportation in all of Delmarva, for like the second biggest city on Delmarva, it's a shocker. And drug trafficking in many neighborhoods, as this woman pointed out two weeks ago. And then there's housing issues within recovery housing as well. And then there's, of course, not enough subsidies, and there were low-income housing for those people that, who need it. And a university that has at least two, two hate crimes in the past five years. Now, some of these things haven't been mentioned in the city council meetings, some of these, many of these things have. Some of these things have been fixed, as you just mentioned, so many of these things haven't. But no matter what these things are, it's important to look at this any way you want to. Obviously, these guys have a big job on them. They got a lot going on. And this isn't even talking about the housing development we want to build in the middle of downtown that we've been bickering about for, you know, a decade at least, I'm sure. This is a lot going on, and let's just hope at least half of this stuff can get fixed, hopefully, in there in this administration. I want to speak a lot about the hate crime that happened in October. It's probably the LGBT community, it lives in the SU territory, but to me, I don't find it appropriate, maybe, to speak in that at a city council meeting as opposed to when it's a university issue. So, I don't know, I'll just live it and live on. God bless.
Mr. Cox, thank you.
Hi, everyone. First and foremost, for the city council members and Mr. Mayor, the Administrator Kitzro, the various department heads that I've seen kind of flowing in and out, and members of our local fire and police department and community leaders, I just want to say thank you for everything that you do, thank you for your service. I understand it's a very difficult job, and I understand that you guys are all very active in the community to the best of your capacity to fulfill your mandate. And I want to thank you for your time. Some of you I know, some of you I don't, some are new faces. My name is Yodit Gadamu, I'm a local. Some of you know me from childhood growing up. Some of you know me from my work in service with the governor's office, both under Governor Hogan and now under Governor Moore as commissioner. Some of you know me as a local business owner, the owner of Pemberton Coffee House. And yes, we are back.
Good.
We're coming back, yes, that's it. We've been saying, we're coming, we're coming, we're coming, we are back, and we are enjoying it. It has been, there have been some growing pains, god knows, our first day was frantic, but, you know, things are going really well. I have to say that, you know, everybody faced COVID in different ways. The hospitality sector was severely hit, as you all know. I mean, along with many others, to be honest, but, I mean, it was pretty difficult for the, for hotels, restaurants, and things like that. And unfortunately, we were forced to close our doors. Right now, we are proud to be a part of the center of a resurgence, both in the hospitality sector and of business in general post-COVID. One of the nexuses of growth that the city is experiencing is right there on Pemberton Drive. We have the opening of Papayo Market, we have the opening of the Laundry Man, and then we have Pemberton Coffee House. That constitutes an entire city block, right? That's the entire city block from Nanacooke to Parsons Road. And it's all open within the past two months. And that is, that's huge, both for the city, for employment. And as everyone knows, with increased business comes increased foot traffic. And we've got a good number of people walking to all of our businesses, even within, within an earshot, so I think it's called Amaran, or there was a place that opened right there in the Pecan Square. So there's, there's a lot of growth, and now there's a lot more foot traffic. And with cars coming in and out of our parking lot, you'll find that the road right there on Pemberton is not walkable. It's pretty dangerous, to be quite honest. I mean, we've got cars coming in and out of our parking lot, right? So that's our exit, coming out by the Nanacooke Road, intersection of Pemberton Drive. There's no sidewalk there, and there's no crosswalk going across Nanacooke. So we're seeing like children, particularly kids just kind of coming out after school, and they're walking, they're choosing to walk on the side of the road. We see women with strollers, we see elderly, we've seen some people that are disabled, that are, I don't know if that's the right word. So people who are, who are in wheelchairs, trying to navigate that stretch. It's not very long, but it's extremely dangerous. Not only is it a blind spot because it's a curve that is at an awkward angle, but there's no legal crosswalk there, and it's poorly lit. Like, that corner has zero lighting. There have been accidents, there have been, there have been, I mean, I see people practically trying to crawl up the side of this hill. It's pretty steep going up to our, and, you know, we're happy to accommodate it as best we can, but I don't know if it's any safer going into a busy cafe that's now, we have a beer and wine license, thank god. So we have the option for entertainment in the evening. And now we've got people coming out of this parking lot while pedestrians are choosing between, should I walk through a busy parking lot where that's a throughway? Or should I walk, pressing myself and my child across the side of a hill, where there's, there's very little walk room? And it's dangerous. So I am employing the city to work with us, work with the local businesses, so that we can increase walkability in that area by developing both a small, there's a small stretch of sidewalk that doesn't exist, that I believe can exist with the, with the right impetus. There's also a need for a crosswalk across Nanacooke right there, because there are so many people that are coming, especially with the Laundry Man being opened, and with our business being open, people like to make that walkable. And god willing, we'll be in a position in the next couple of years to see more businesses. I would love to see there be a small business district really have power, have strength, that we can start increasing the amount of revenue being generated for our city. The employment opportunities are already booming. This is all growth that's occurred over the past two to three months of businesses being opened in that area. So we're hoping that the city council will provide us their, your support to get a, a small little bit of sidewalk and a crosswalk for our, for our local community, so that our neighbors are not risking their lives to cross the street.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. You all have a beautiful blessed night.
Yes, you as well. As a point of personal privilege, someone called me from your business on Friday, and I invited them to, so thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. I believe, I believe that's in Councilwoman Jackson's district, so maybe, maybe we'll, maybe we'll have a little, a little coffee. Yes, yes.
We have delicious smoked turkey legs.
Yes, I remember, yes.
They are massive and over a hundred equal. This is a shameless club.
That was the one that sent that picture.
Well, wish you the best, and again, thank you. I remember you from about, just about ten years ago, and you were, you were a very kind person. So thank you for, for investing back in the community, and you'll have a couple of members of council. Yeah, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm back. My name is Lynn Bratton, that hasn't changed, and I still live in Salisbury. And former, former student, okay. I always point out my former students. Okay, so it was addressed earlier at the, and I appreciate the, the, pre, the meeting at the work session. There was a comment made about the purging of the email list. I just have a little statement that I'd like to make. No, I don't work for Daily Times, I don't work for anybody, I don't get paid for any of this that I do. I don't get any blogging information or stipends. I'm not like a blogging person that gets any kind of money, I wish I did. But for years, I've received an email from the city clerk's office when the agendas for the city council meetings were posted. I have then shared them via Nextdoor, Facebook, Sapoa, other organizations, including church groups, as the topics may have pertained to them, and with others that I felt would be interested in timely notice. As of this past week, I have learned that the distribution list has been edited, and that I have been removed from this notification system. It's unclear who else has been purged, but I heard earlier that you were looking at media distributions. I've never gotten a, a press release based on that email distribution that I was on. I only got the notice of the weekly, then, city council meetings. But I want folks to understand that without city council discussion or approval that, that purging has occurred, I'm speaking tonight on what appears to be a limiting of public awareness. Public engagement has been at the highest that I can remember. And I've been coming to these meetings for like six years, and we've had more people involved than I think we've ever had. Some of you are new people, some, some read about it. People are reading the posts that I share, asking questions, then they attend meetings. They're becoming engaged in the business of the city, some of the folks I see here tonight. I know that most posts on Nextbook, Nextdoor normally get, because I get statistics, they get over one point seven thousand views, just for a normal post. And yes, I know that some of those are repeat views, but not like eight hundred times two. I mean, you know, that's a lot of people. But still getting the city agendas in front of that many citizens means that people want information. In fact, in the last forty-eight hours, a posting that I made about this meeting has been seen by two thousand three hundred people. That's one posting getting out to that many folks through one venue, that's just Nextdoor. That's not any of the other generational places that I send it. So no, I'm not hired by a, by a media company, I'm not part of the mainstream media, but I do have a way of getting this information out, and I think it should not be stymied. Often, members of the council and I do not agree, and, and we don't see eye to eye. I mean, we, that's, that's part of life. But that is no reason to shudder. A free distribution of agenda and meeting information, I do it for free. I spend a lot of hours doing this, for free. I try to post the original documents when they are available. And I frequently have said, and anybody that's followed me will attest to this, read the documents, attend the meetings, listen to the recordings, and make your own decisions. I really just put it out there and say, here's the facts, here's the information, folks. But most of all, be informed is the way I finish it. I respectfully request to have my email reinstated on the distribution listing, so that I can share the information as soon as it is available. And I say that because sometimes the intent is to get it out by Wednesday or by Thursday. And so I check, and, and, but, but knowing that I would get that email, I didn't have to constantly try to check, because I would check my emails. And as soon as I got a posting from the city clerk's office, then I would share it with Sapoa or with the church group, or pretty much almost immediately. It didn't sit and wait for a couple of days or for me to finally get it out to everybody. So again, I was disappointed in being purged. Nobody, I, I, just all of a sudden, it happened. I reached out to Julie, because we'd had some problems once before where there was a glitch with my email. And I reached out and I said, oh, Mrs. IT's added again, something up. And she says, no, there's been a change in policy. So at that point, I'm just coming to you and asking that you reconsider that I'm a pretty good source of media distribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton.
Good evening, again. Von Siggers, citizen of Salisbury. And if I may, I'd like to just build upon the Black History information that we shared earlier. I am so appreciative that we have such a rich Black history to draw from, but that you would consider sharing from a more recent era and highlighting some of those who have been on the forefront in recent years. Formerly, the City of Salisbury elected in an at-large system, which didn't really allow for an opportunity for an African-American to be elected in the city elections. Mr. Billie Jean Jackson, in nineteen eighty-six, through the help of the ACLU, won victory in getting a minority, majority district. And in nineteen eighty-seven, that district was, a decree was made to establish that district. Mrs. Gertrude Shockley was the first to be elected in the Black District. Following her death, Mary Black Pinkett was appointed to serve in her unexpired term. And following Mrs. Pinkett, the first contested race was, happened. And I just happened to be that person who was elected in that district. And I would just like to point out that the victory that Mr. Jackson won is one that I'm happy to say that his daughter currently reaps the benefit of. And, and I'd also like to point out that in the twenty twenty-three election, was overwhelmingly chosen by almost a three-to-one victory. Not happy to say that I had to eat that dust, but I am happy to say that I am so happy to see that that minority-majority district election reflected numbers comparable to the rest of the city. And that I applaud for District One. One of the things that I fought for when I was in office was to have five districts established. I didn't manage to succeed in that, but I think it is a benefit that a subsequent council managed to accomplish that. Thus, we have five representatives from five different areas of the city. And happy also to see that the county now is evolving to that area. And what I would like to see, even before this month is over, that we are able to highlight some of the accomplishments of those persons who have since these districts have been established, to see some of the things that they've accomplished, aspire to accomplish, things that we hope to help keep shaping and molding the opportunity for African-Americans and other minorities as well. And again, I congratulate my contestant, and I believe that Mr. Doughty is the first Black elected male and president of the city council. So I applaud this Black History moment. Thank you.
Ms. Siggers.
Good evening, again, Robert Taylor, again. I see it's a quarter of eight. We had two meetings tonight. Each agenda was, I would call, pretty light. And by that, I mean, there wasn't a lot of public discussion of it. There was some discussion, particularly in the work session. And I point that out because the way you've now set things up to just have two meetings a month, I think the organization of it is what my mom would call bas-ackwards. In other words, the work sessions should be after the regular meeting, the legislative meeting, not the legislative meeting starting whenever the work sessions are over. Because most people are probably primarily interested in the legislative meetings. And you don't know when they're going to start, because of the fact that you don't know when the work session's going to end. Now, I think you could solve that problem, plus the problem of the executive branch wanting occasionally to have a work session immediately before a regular session, without a two-week split, by doing it like the county council does. What I'm suggesting is you use that as a model. They have their work sessions after their regular meetings that start at six, and then they also have a day meeting, splits one, two times a month. But that would be the way to do it. And then if the executive branch wants to have one immediately before your legislative session, they can ask for it. But most of the work sessions should be afterwards. This could be put into the minutes, I guess. There's something like this in the county charter for emergency meetings. I mean, that could easily be worded that way, that if the executive branch requests that it be done ahead, that it, that be done. But then everything else, unless that request is made, would be done after your legislative meeting. So that's my first point. My second point is, I think really, My second point is, I think really, there was absolutely no real need to revise the rules. They had been revised 10 years ago, 2014, and they were working fine. I listened to your discussion. I didn't hear anything meaningful about changing. Now, what you did do, however, is you took out one provision that I think is very significant, and this happened to be added in 2014. And that was, the council president shall accept public comments from citizens during council consideration of an item, in addition to a general comment period, that's part of what was up until now, Rule 6F. Memo I sent you today, email, I put G by mistake. It's actually F. So I stand corrected by myself on that. And I think what's happened here, it's hard not to look at these new rules as if they've been deliberately designed to spite, stifle public comment. I'm sorry I have to say that, but I think that's a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And in that first portion, it was mentioned, but I think hearing it from another voice, it may, council may decide to do that. But I didn't mention about having the legislative session before work session, but again, change, you know, it's, takes time, so. But we did hear that, so we will certainly entertain that. Any other public comments? Council, what, do you?
I'm just going to reinforce what Mr. Taylor said about...
Do you all, what? Okay. If you, yes. Thank you, Ms. Siggers.
If you would like to come up to the podium, sure. Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, it was something that I hadn't intended to mention, but I'd just like to reinforce what Mr. Taylor said, particularly the, having the general public to respond to items prior to your making a decision on them. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Seeing none, we will pivot to administration comments.
My kids are in a whole week of school this week coming up, but it does not look like, so. Well, the good news is, we prepped this morning as a team, and it's not going to be 20 degrees for two weeks straight. So it is going to come in. We are tracking very quickly and closely the storm that is going to start tomorrow, and we will be keeping the public informed on any decision points that we are making. We know public schools and private schools have already started closing tomorrow afternoon and into Wednesday, so we will be making sure that we are deploying resources appropriately, and depending on the depth and the significance, we will be addressing things in the neighborhoods. But luckily, it looks like there's going to be warmer temperatures and rain on the eve of the storm, so we will hopefully have this stuff. It'll come significantly and quick, but then it'll be gone relatively quickly. So we're just going to ask people to, when it's snowing and snowing hard, stay off the roads, stay safe, and we will get to you as quickly as possible. And then another shout out to all of our social personnel, public safety folks who have to work during these emergency situations, and, you know, thank you for, and you all need to be safe. So that's all I've got for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Siggers.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to echo some of these are comments were made by folks in the crowd regarding public comment and just general meeting decorum. You know, to me, you know, I think Andy and I, we've talked about it pretty regularly. We come to this meeting every week, week after week, in support of the city to try and participate in the dialogue of the city. And I try to be as respectful as I can and acknowledge that, you know, President Doughty, you're running the meeting. That said, I'd like to think, you know, we should be a part of the regular conversation or whatever it is. We're not going to agree on everything. We're not going to agree on, maybe in some cases, a lot. But I do think, you know, when I've asked, when I asked to speak, that I should be allowed to speak if I'm going to be invited to the meeting. Does that seem like a fair standard? That's all I'm asking, you know? So I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I mean, I have to look at alternative ways to communicate if that's where we're going to be, but I like to think that that's always the way it's been, as I understand it, and I like to be the same courtesy extended to me. So, and to the, to the subject of, I think sometimes when you try to, for lack of a better term, I mean, this means manipulate people's ability to communicate, I don't think you help your message. I think you actually hurt your message, whatever message you're trying to carry, whatever wall you're carrying. So I think, in that case, I think it's, you know, in the comments that I've got, and there were many, you know, I don't think it fared well. So it doesn't help you, doesn't help me, doesn't help anybody, and most of all, it doesn't help the taxpayer. And I think if we could have that sort of courtesy, whether it's the public or the administration, that would be greatly appreciated. And so that's all I wanted to say. I kind of left early to the last meeting a little frustrated, and, you know, like I said, I think I've got a record attendance relative to most mayors at the city council meetings, in terms of my percentage of ones attended. I think I was sick one time, but I'm here, and like I say, I come here every week, as was Andy, trying to help do the city's business, and I'd like to think that you would show me that respect and allow me to speak thoroughly and fully on topics that I think are relevant. Thank you.
Seeing no other administration comments, we'll pivot to council comments. Council, any, any comments?
I do. I appreciate Mr. Taylor and Von recognizing my father. You stole my thunder, because I did actually forget. I'm like, oh my God, I'll forget my own father. But in his activism and everything that he did, he, in honor of everything he's ever done, and he was a person that just loved everybody and worked hard to please everybody. His community were, really spoke for him, and spoke very well. Northlake Park, former Northlake Park was named in his honor. It was named the Billie Jean Jackson Park, Senior Park, which was a great honor for him. He was just one great man. He was a great father. I can actually say myself, he, he didn't play. Now, he didn't play. No, he didn't. He was very, he was a disciplinarian when it came to, you know, his kids and anybody else in the community. And I hear grown men right now, if he was still living, that he would come home from Florida. They would say, if I see Mr. Billy, I'm going to run. You know? So I'm like, he still kind of held that kind of presence with people, and that's what we need right now. We need somebody in our communities to be able to have that kind of respect. Our young people need somebody to hold their feet to the fire and know when they're doing something wrong to get out of the way, that be respectful. Also, Saturday, I'm having a Valentine's Day and talent show for the young people at the VFW 10159. So if any of you have kids or grandchildren, bring them out so they can enjoy themselves. We do have a good time. Every time we have something, it's a great time. And there'll be prizes, gifts, a meal. It is a $5 charge for them, but they get a meal, gifts, prizes, everything. They just have, get to work. So make sure that you bring your kids, and if you need more info, you can contact me. My number's 410-726-8478. I love the kids and the seniors, so I'm always trying to stay busy. Thank you.
Councilwoman, any other comments? Councilwoman DeShoe.
I had an airport commission meeting today and want to share with everyone, the security system upgrade is almost finished. Those of you that might be interested, putting it out there, I have a website for you, umes.edu/amt. If you know of anybody that would be interested in attending the maintenance school or enrolling in the maintenance school, we were hoping to open it in January and the little, you know, glitches, so they're going to dive in in August, hopefully. So looking forward to that. It's a great collaborative effort. Those of you that wonder about our new generation, go attend Rock and Roll Revival at Bennett, and they do a fabulous job there. This is the last week for that. Wycomico Rotary, with everything they do, I was privileged to be at the Hero Awards that they held last week, and they honored two people in the community. So it's nice to know there are lots of good things going on, and people are, you know, being recognized for that. Couple of updates that I asked for. I want to thank the administrative side. Ann Street, which has been on everyone's mind, they have hired someone to manage that, which I think, based upon my experience dealing with homeless individuals and management, the person coming on board will be an, an excellent addition. The boarded up homes, we've asked about in previous meetings, Miraboda is working on that. There's a new system, and once they get that up and running, hopefully they'll find out owners of these boarded up homes and move forward with that. And I would like to, one last thing, with the weather turning nice soon after Andy's snowstorm. The biker issue, the, you know, dirt bikes on Route 13 and the police department, we get calls, what is anybody doing about it? And there are four points that Chief Minshane shared with me that the police department is actively working on. One of those, it's a legislative process, so get in touch with your delegates and have them try to put some teeth in something to regulate this. The other thing is, they're now collaborating, the city of Salisbury Police Department is now collaborating with the county, with Sheriff Mike Lewis and other municipalities, to see if they can work together to address this for the safety of the citizens. Public input, do not, do not dismiss your importance in terms of saying something. Don't assume somebody else is going to say it for you. Speak up, that's always helpful. And the other thing I wasn't aware of, if some of our officers do take on a vehicle pursuit of the bikers, and there is something that is, you know, there's an awful accident or someone is hurt as a result of this chase, it's considered use of force, and your officers that work diligently every day could be charged. So I just wanted to give you those updates. They're ones I wanted, so I found out what the answers were to share with you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShoe. Any other comments from council?
I just want to also point out that not only do we have two history-making Black legislators here on this city council, but we have a lot of other, on the lower shore, a lot of other Black municipal elected officials, people like Todd Knuck, LaJan Cephas.
Spuddy.
Spuddy Cephas. You know, we have, we are very blessed to have so many members of so many municipalities from the Black community, and the work that they do is tremendous, and I'm, I'm really pleased to be able to work alongside them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory.
Everybody has said everything.
Yes.
I just, yes, just donate blood, please, save a life. Sorry, sorry.
Yes.
President Doughty.
Oh, and I do have a question. Is it officially Andy Storm? Can we call it that?
Yeah. Awesome. Yes. Thank you all. Again, and thank you, thank the members of the public, staff, administration, and each respective office, again, for your work for tonight's meeting. I think it was a really good one. I, and again, appreciate you all for your contributions and for highlighting Black History Month. It is very important for us to do, especially in today's climate, is to highlight the work that those who came before us did, and again, especially locally, which we, you know, we highlighted, Councilwoman Jackson's father. But I think what's important and key to rec, is to remember, is while those persons were making those very change-making and, and very pivotal changes, you know, they, they weren't quite appreciated, or they weren't touted, or they weren't celebrated. So, you know, I think, you know, many times in this day and age, you know, we have people who are making change very much locally and regionally, and it's not celebrated. But we have to remember that change does happen. And so I appreciate those who came before us, who fought through those hard times, so that we could sit at this very table, so I can sit here at this very table. I do not take that for granted, and, and that's what keeps moving forward, is that sometimes things aren't celebrated in the moment, but that is what makes us a great city, a great state, and a great nation. So with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.